Okay, this is the Board of Selectment meeting, Monday, March 4th, 2024. Opening the meeting at 6:02. You stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm having a little bit of trouble with the wheels. Okay.
We have a motion to approve warrant WR24-18.
I move we approve the warrant WR24-18.
Second.
There are no minutes. Is there anyone here for public session?
Nope.
Nobody on that?
Nope.
All right, next up is the annual Maya Health Dental Renewal Vote and Sign.
What's the historical increases on that? Do you have any recollection?
Yeah. Oh, what it is.
Really?
GIC was 9% for the state. Brooklyn was 9.9, ours is 9.5. So we're right in, right in the mix. So the rate would be, Network Blue New England was 97206 for the single plan and 228419 for the family plan. Blue Choice New England Plan 2, which is PPO? Ray Drummond. PPO.
Yes.
Is 108212 for the single and 20054301 for the family. The dental plan for the single is 4745 and the family is 10369. That only went up 4.8%.
And that's the full amount and then the employees pay 75?
Employees pay...
Or 20?
30.
70.
Town pays 70.
It's split, the 9.95 is just split between the town and the employee. Do we need a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I would move we accept the Maya Health and Dental rates as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right over here is Chikarelli Hunt Road. This is the remaining land.
Yeah, the house lot was the first one that we did last year.
Yeah.
And then there were, I think, two separate lots.
Yes.
But now he's combined the two and selling.
It's a better thing.
The horseshoe.
It's a better thing for him to do.
Yeah.
And we don't have $240,000 lying around.
I don't do.
Yeah, no.
A large part of it is the plant.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lucy, is that 61 or A or B or?
Yes.
So does that go to the assessors for the assessment?
Yes.
And then the roll.
It has to go to assessors first, we're the last ones to get it.
So is this still the average of the last 10 years?
Good amount of taxes.
Yeah, because they have to pay that all back.
I read the motion.
You want to?
Oh, you read it from there? I would move that we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Ockham, Massachusetts acknowledge receipt of the notice dated February 20th, 2024, and hereby waive any option that may be held by the Town of Ockham to purchase land in Ockham under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, arising out of the sale by Thomas E. Chikarelli, owner of the property known as Hunt Road, Ockham, Mass, Worcester County, Massachusetts, being assessors map 402 lot 16.3 and 16.2, which has title reference recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Book 29797, page 255, and is being sold to Christopher Vinton and Amanda Malone, or their nominee, for the amount of $240,000.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. I did talk with the new owners, that are going to be the new owners of the property. They're not looking to build there, they're looking to keep it. I can't say open because they want to do some plantings in there and build a little barn in there for their equipment.
Oh.
No, that's what they're thinking of, keeping it rural as they can. They're from Holden. I always do it, just in case it feels more official.
He waived for the yacht for Green Hollow.
How much is the fee? How much would the fee be that he's waiving?
I'm not sure. He said he would be available if he wanted to call.
No, I didn't know.
No, it was just curious.
I don't know.
He said his fee, but the town would also be out the...
30%. Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, this split.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is the 70/30.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he did send an email to back it up, saying that if the town was okay, he would waive the fee to the...
We're charging the town, we're just moving money around, so what's the point?
This is going nowhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's nice that he's willing to opt out of payment.
Yeah, he said, "I'm requesting the town allow me to waive the fee for the Green Hollow arch replacement."
And this is the second time he's waived it on a town.
Yeah, he did it for the library.
Yes, and we do appreciate it, especially from the Historical Commission, Cemetery Commission, and the Ockham Cultural Society, et cetera. So it is a very nice thought, and we do appreciate him doing that.
Any other motions?
I move we accept the building commissioners' offer to waive his fees and that the town be approved, the waiving of our fees.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the opera funds for obtaining an estimate from fiber from the town hall, library, police, fire, highway, buildings, is that yours?
Yes, so the CM Geeks made a recommendation to me that that would save the town a lot of monthly fees in the long run. Because right now, we have servers for each of these properties, and we're paying separate internet fees for each of these properties. And since he was aware that we had a significant amount of money remaining, that that would be a good investment for the town in the long haul.
Did he give you a price?
We, he wouldn't do it. He's saying as our IT support, it's something that we should go down that road. He said it's about a mile, I think he said it was a mile. It wouldn't be a lot of money, but in the long run, it would pay itself back pretty quick.
I was just wondering how much it would take out of the opera fund.
Yeah, we would have to reach out to, I think the guys who have been doing it in town are the same company, it's like the biggest company around.
Yes.
I can tell you that they were going to do work at Treasure Valley, and it was $20,000 to rerun fiber for about a half a mile. But they had to take fiber down and they were moving it to new poles. So this would just be to get an estimate.
Just get an estimate. I had something from Paul here. I think it was Bolton, who did this with their town hall, police, fire, library.
Okay.
But it didn't spread out much, more than we are, and theirs was $190,000.
Wow.
And that would take our opera money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But like I said, they really spread out.
I mean, even if we, we did here to the library, that cuts out one, and if you did the two buildings over there, instead of paying for four, you're paying for two.
Exactly, so either way with... Do you want to?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, yeah, work with Paul on that. So do we need to move that? Okay, so I would move that we authorize, moving forward with working with CM Geeks to obtain an estimate to run fiber between town hall, library, police, highway, and fire, or other appropriate options that might include two buildings to each other.
Yeah. Okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Records, opera money, digitalization.
Yes, the, this has been designated the day of the month that if you want opera money to submit to the board, that you are looking towards this, and it's a possibility of coming. The Cemetery Commission had discussed with the Board of Selectmen a year and a half ago about digitizing all of their records and what it was going to take. We had looked at a company, but we never went through with it, we didn't follow through with it, and we might now start to follow through with it. We have two new members coming up for the Cemetery Commission, and it would be a good thing if we could get everything put into the computer, and then it would go on to SharePoint so that everybody would have access for it eventually. But right now, we're also looking at two companies, one is just a software, which is going to be expensive enough, but with software, you keep paying updates every year, and right now they're at about $500. We're also looking at the same company that we contacted about a year and a half ago, hopefully they would still be interested, but we also, with a new member on our Cemetery Commission, might be able to do it in-house. And we're going to look at that first, because that would be the easiest and the least expensive way. If we find that we cannot do it, then we will be looking to operate to fund the rest of it, and the estimate we got a year and a half ago was $6,000 to $12,000, depending how much work we wanted to put into it ourselves, compared to what the company would put into it. So we're going to start with ourselves first and work our way, but we just wanted to put in that there's a possibility we will be coming to the board for opera money for the Cemetery Commission.
That's a good idea.
At one point, the Leicester Regional Public Health Coalition had recommended that we apply for, the Board of Health applied for a grant for a particular scanner that could scan plans. They said that that would probably be something we would get, but I wonder if, I mean, this scanner works great for Board of Health, except for plans, and I have to use like a PDF scanner on my phone and lay the plans on the floor and do a PDF of it. But between the building commissioner, Board of Health, assessors, I mean, it might be something that would benefit the town hall to have the scanner, especially with your cards, these scanners can do multiple.
That would be great, and not only the cards, but the maps that we have are so old, they are falling apart. We have got them, got them, to get them permanentized, to set for work, okay? But, because we keep handling them to say, you know, where's this, where's this, and they are starting to separate, and all the folds, they're very odd colored and like that, so we could use something like that, we have no way of duplicating them.
Yep.
So that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Can I chime in on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Just state your name. State your name.
Matt Brunel. Matt Brunel. One of the members of the Cemetery Commission. So we do have the computer, we got it before the school year started. I teach school, went back full-time, and so my time obviously was a little bit more limited than it was over the summer. So when we last spoke at the meeting in August, and then subsequently since, I still think that we can do it in-house with the programs that are on the computer. I think laying out the maps, that I know that's a concern because of the age.
Yeah.
I think that is a very possible thing that we can do using the programs we have on the computer. So, and then doing the input of the records into the programs we have, it will take some time just to transfer it in, but once they're all in, as we add in new plots based off of people, purchasing the plots, who's change of ownership from the town to the people buying them, or if we do have a burial, adding that in. I think once everything that is already in the records is put in, once I'm able to digitize that with the program we have, coming up with a operating procedure for how that system works, so if we have members come on and off.
Right.
We'll be able to transfer, we'll be able to say, here is the operating procedure, and this is how it works, this is how, so, and then we can train everybody along the...
This is exactly what we are hoping to do and that we were planning to be able to do, because as the older members are getting off, we've got to get it so that for the newer ones coming on, there's something in place that they can go to, learn how to work it, and it will work fine.
Exactly.
This way, it's very, very difficult, the way we do it, all by hand and pencil and pen, you know, it's very difficult to make sure that everything is done precisely, whereas with a computer, it would be much more precise than what we have right now.
One of the concerns, I mean, we're going to have the meeting, Cemetery Commission meeting on Thursday, so we can talk about it more then.
Yes.
But, just a concern I have is if we bring in an outside company, the management that we're going to need to do to make sure they're doing exactly what we actually want.
Mm-hmm.
And then also, the actual records, getting those in without them not getting displaced or lost in handling.
Exactly.
As well as the recurring charge after the ARPA money's gone. If we're able to, if we do that with ARPA, but we've got a contract that outlives that money, that money's going to have to come in from the tax rule or...
The budget.
A budget, it's going to get, be another added line.
It will be.
So if we can set it up to work with the programs we already have, having seen the maps, having seen the records, I think that's still very doable.
Good.
So I think we can, we can address that more on Thursday.
But I just want to leave the door open for us to get into the opera, just in case something falls through. But I think you'll be able to do it, I think it'll turn out really well, and it'll be a positive for the Cemetery Commission.
I think so.
So you say that you have the computer for it, but would you use like the copier scanner, or do you have another device that would scan?
So looking at it, the way they're all in, and the way the cemeteries are organized, we have all the Microsoft programs, so I think it's something that we can very easily set up in a program like Microsoft Excel, because it's all gritted out, and we can just, we could, we could essentially, I could input the map into an Excel spreadsheet and plot out all the plots in the cells based off of what's there.
But to get the documents, like the pictures, you would need to scan it, or...
We could just, I would just manually input it in there, then we would have a digital map with the spreadsheet. It would be reconstructing it on the, in the spreadsheet.
So like a cell in a spreadsheet would be a plot?
Yep, and then with setting up an operating procedure, how do you save it each time you change it? How do you, so that it stays current and that there's a record?
That's it, yeah.
So that it's, if it's updated, we would have to obviously talk about exactly what kind of checks we wanted and balances, so that if there's a change made, somebody's held accountable for it. But I think we're just going to, we're going to have to go through that as a committee and figure out exactly how we're going to wind that up.
And we'll listen to everything you have to say, because you are the expert on the board for us. And we do appreciate you coming on the board to help us with that. He was a write-in candidate.
Nice.
We just told everybody to say.
Lucy, so if this is the opera night, Greg contacted me on Saturday.
The trees.
To go out to Pine Grove, because a tree snapped off over on the northwest side of the...
Could you introduce yourself, please, as the tree warden?
Michael Brunel, tree warden, Town of Ockham.
That's why you were looking at the trees for us.
So since then, I've gone back out, and Matt went out with me, and we've probably got a half a dozen trees that if they go over in the wind, these spruce trees, they're going to conceivably tear up a lot of the dearly departed and roll, roll over a few headstones, you know, at $6,000 to $10,000 apiece.
Yeah.
I think it might be a good expenditure, if there's ARPA money available. It's going to involve bringing in a crane, take these trees down.
Big trees, they really are large.
So I will come to the meeting on Thursday night, and I have my three written quotes for this fiscal year.
Okay.
And those include cranes and different types of equipment.
Excellent.
That I haven't brought into town with, with the outfit that I'm using at the moment, but those are all, so you would have to vote to accept those, you know, to use for the cemetery.
Right, we would.
And then if you want, I can make contacts with those reps to see if they can get in. I've talked to Jack Amadeo, who's a butter on the west side, and he's agreeable to help us out as far as access to getting them out if we need to do it.
Oh, very nice.
If they're going that way. But that's something we got to figure out with weights and cranes and trucks and vehicles, because we don't want to do damage over there either.
Will we have to redo the roads in the cemetery, once all that heavy equipment goes through?
If we do it right, we're going to do it very low impact.
Okay, good.
Because we don't really have a lot of room to maneuver.
No, you don't.
On the corners, and that's going to be one of the first things, to see if we can even get a crane between the gates. We have that one massive tree right there on the left, as you can see.
Yes, yeah.
And that thing has to be at least five to six feet across, so it's quite a bit of weight there. It's not something we're going to cut and throw off.
Right, again, no.
And we have headstones almost up to it.
You do.
So that's a long, that whole side. And those root structures, if that thing goes over.
Everything comes up.
Those roots go under the road, and God knows how far out they go.
True.
Anybody's ever dealt with it.
It's a job that needs to be done. We've done a few trees here and there, as we can afford it.
Wish we'd have learned.
And, but, and then there's the one near the road, that needs to go.
Yeah.
It's dying out, and then there's the two over where they...
The upper right-hand corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, where the contractor keeps his fill and stuff and boom, those need to go, they're dying out, so.
I have a feeling a lot of our pine trees at Pine Grove are going to be dying out, because pine trees around the state are dying out at a really alarming rate.
This one that just snapped off was all heart rot, it's only about this big, and it's hung up on a bunch of birch trees and white pine. But I think the goal should be to take everything within the stone walls and just take it out, because it's only grown up. I mean, it wasn't bare, other than these big spruce.
Yeah.
And those weren't that big when I was a little kid.
Oh, no.
They weren't even half the size they are now, but they grow fast.
They do.
So, but they need to go before, you know, we're paying for headstones, because that would be a mess, that would, that would just be...
Yeah, all right, that would be great. It would make it look good and keep it safer.
I'll bring in copies of those, and you can look at them, and you guys can make a decision.
Now, Monday nights, the first Monday nights, was for us to present to the board if we want anything, what night is the night that the board?
It's supposed to be Monday nights, but, I mean, I think with the, we would want to get in there as soon as possible with the freeze and now before it gets wet.
And the rain, because...
So I think it should just get on as soon as possible. We're not limited to the first Monday of every month.
Well, next Monday, we're meeting anyway.
Right.
So, on the old business, we can just approve it, we already discussed it tonight, so.
But do you have an estimate?
Mike will get me the information.
No, that's what I...
Yeah, he'll get it to me for Thursday.
I mean, if you two can say, hey, go ahead, and try and get an estimate before Thursday night, I mean, I have the hourly rates, but I don't have the estimate as to how many hours it's going to take.
It's the estimates we need for the Board of Selectmen to say to use ARPA. Doing the actual work in the cemetery, the board doesn't have that control, it's the commission that has the control.
Correct, yeah.
So we're trying to...
In your meeting, right, so your meeting is Thursday night.
Thursday night.
But you could maybe, are you the chair up at, Lucy?
Am I? No, Greg Spiny is.
Oh, great.
But if we, I mean, if we discuss that on Thursday, we take a look at the quotes, and then we're able to make the contacts, and obviously there'll be some scheduling on those outfits, being able to actually get out, take a look and see the scope of the work. If we can keep it in, like you said, the old business, or so that when we have the quotes from the three different, we can come back to it.
Yeah.
And just, we can let them know that it's something that we'd like to get to, because we have the possibility for this funding that we wouldn't have to go ask for above and beyond.
Right.
We just have to get approval here at the Selectmen's meeting, but we wouldn't have to take, potentially have to take it to town meeting, if that's the case.
Right, exactly.
If I'm understanding the way it works.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, one company is Northern Trade. And another one is Tree Tech, they're out of Rhode Island. Yeah. I forget which one is which. One has it as an hourly rate. Another has it as a daily rate. So. It's kinda, you need to know how many hours they're gonna estimate. Is it gonna be a full day? Is it gonna be X number of hours? But if you want, I can make those contacts this week, maybe have them come out before Thursday. But that would be like, you know, you don't have a vote to say, yeah, hey, go ahead. I mean, if that's all right, I'll do that. Just, you know, to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, definitely. Oh, definitely. More information we can get the better of the hour.
Tree Tech, I think, will probably come right out because the manager there used to work for Grid. He was our point person in this area, so. He likes any excuse to come up this way and.
Okay, no, that would be fine. That, that would help out a lot. Thank you.
What I can get done.
All right. So we'll take it up next Monday. Anything else?
You're good. I think that's it.
Thanks, Matt. Next, we have a safety complex emergency repair. Kevin had mentioned that one pump went down. Leads the oil into the heaters and the other one was on its last legs. So they, RJ McDonald came out to repair. They repaired both of them. So the bill is twenty-five hundred dollars. Neither department has that in their budget. So this could be a. One of two things, could be an ARPA fund expense or it could be a.
Reserve fund.
We already have one request into the reserve for the school for repairs. We could put this one in because they haven't, they haven't voted on it yet.
Tomorrow. No, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I mean, that's what reserve is there for.
That's what it's there for.
And it's, it's a lower amount.
Yeah.
So.
It is.
Yeah.
I like the idea of the reserve.
I think so.
All right.
But there is an issue with the, even in the budgets for next year, not a lot of money goes into maintenance. And those buildings are need maintenance.
If we get the trees done for the cemeteries, we won't be asking for so much next year. But it would be a bigger expense in the budget for next year. We have to wait till next year to start doing any of that.
Yeah, yeah. And it could be more costly.
Yes, it will be.
Are there any trees around, I guess, your question, back to the cemeteries? Are there trees outside the perimeter of the stone walls that are a risk too, that you noticed, that are not our land?
Not, not really. I mean, eventually maybe, but we don't own it.
Right.
And that tree that came down the other day and took power up on Turnpike Road, that was not a town tree. Just off the right of way and the wind took the top off and took wires down.
What about the Evergreen Center, right along Old Turnpike Road?
There's one right at the old schoolhouse.
Yeah. We took some, we took some trees down at the old school.
At the historical, yeah.
Pine, pine trees, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, in the back.
Yeah.
Because they were split down the middle.
Right.
Jimmy Rutz came in and climbed that, took that down.
Yeah. I'm just afraid that Pine Grove won't be Pine Grove after a while.
Well, you can always plant new ones.
We may have to. Otherwise, we'll change the name.
Well, like I was saying, when I was four or five years old, those trees were only twelve feet tall.
Yeah.
They just, they grow fast. But they make a mess when they go over.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
So motion, reserve.
I would move that we um, make a request to the Finance Committee. Um, for approval of um, payment for.
Two thousand five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred for the heating system for the highway, um, or public safety building, safety complex building.
Second.
Second law of favor.
Aye.
And next up is the assistant report.
I just want to report to the board that Erin had pointed out, I think it was at the last meeting on Mitell taxes. So I did contact Mitell and it looks like when the account was initially set up. The tax exemption certificate was never sent to them. I requested a refund going all the way back. Can't fault me for trying, um, and for being a valid customer, but they said sorry. They can do two months. So we'll take it. So moving forward, they did send us an email. I sent them the tax exempt form. It's all updated. The sales will be removed. But any other surcharges or fees will still apply. So that's that. I also, the plates for the trailer that the police department got on the grant. Is all been sent. I sent the paperwork to Maya. Plates have been received and it's up and running. I also sent Ms. Cheryl Duval an email letting her know that the, um, the status on the payment. For the generator at the Ocam Center School. So she appreciated the, the heads up on how things will move on. After um, FinCom votes. And I also went to a meeting with Dispatch last Monday at Rutland. And just got some information on our status. Nothing has really changed. Our, our quote will be roughly the same. They updated us that the, they were doing a tower. They're gonna do a tower in South Berry for radios. Now it's no longer gonna be a tower. It's gonna be a ninety-foot pole. I guess they can, that pole is more than sufficient to do what they need it to do versus having a bigger tower. Uh, that would cost them a lot more. It went from, um, it's gonna save them about a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. So that, so the pole will should go in the spring. Um, Mike, as always, is trying to get grants for radios. But no such luck. That's just kinda an informative touch base. Um, it, that was already funded from fiscal year seventeen. It just hasn't happened. That was.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. That's what I have. It was a grant that they got back then. Yeah.
And they'd modify the hundred thousand left over on that.
I don't know. I don't know.
Suggest they make a phone call to nine-one-one. Chairman, ask them if it can be done. It's been done in the past.
So then, um, I also sat in a meeting that Tim had the fire chief with. Rutland in regards to just some hiccups with the dispatching that seems to continue to happen even after the meeting. They're trying their very hardest to rectify it. Um, you know, like Tim said to them at the meeting. They've made it so simple that, you know, I, he doesn't really know what more. They could do to simplify the process of which buttons to hit when it's an Ocam call. They did come prepared and, you know, showing um, ways to even, they're gonna be drilling and quizzing their staff. Just to kinda embed it in them, but clearly it's, still, there was another hiccup right after. But I just kinda sat in just as a second, an additional person for Ocam while Tim had the meeting with them.
I feel bad for, for Ocam and for Tim to have to deal with these issues. And um, there is a risk to life when these mistakes are happening. And should the Board of Selectmen send a letter of concern and hope for a permanent solution? Um, because, you know, after the last one, oh yeah, we're gonna. Nowhere close to Ocam.
Run against Erin.
Hold on one second, you're not on mute. I just feel like we have to support the fire chief in, in this um, ongoing issue. And this is, this isn't even the second time this has happened.
No, they said that they, they really addressed it and it got clearly no mistake is, is ever wanted. But it got a lot better. They, they really narrowed in and I think it, it was something to do with personnel too, that that has shifted and it got a lot better. The last, well, the incident prior to this car, last one was one of their best people. Um, who is a trainer. So, I mean, mistakes do happen and, and, you know, and, and Tim is very aware and conscious of that. But again, it's just a matter of when. I mean, and like Tim said, they've made it so simple, simple. They've really made a new button, you know, so they are trying on their end. It's almost like I can't hold their hand and, and make them do the right thing. I, I don't know what else could be done.
But there was an excuse about they had.
Oh, right. It was overwhelming or something like, and Tim did address that.
Unexpected death. But how about a living person that could have a response to it sooner than a dead person?
The, the unexpected death has nothing to do with EMS.
No, it doesn't.
The police handle that.
Yeah. But that's the.
Our calls is EMS. So.
And if our first responders can get there sooner.
Right.
Yeah.
Versus a town that's twenty, twenty miles from here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just really quickly to go back to the dispatch meeting. In that meeting was myself, Rutland, and the town administrator for Hubbardston and Berry. Um, I know that Nate from Hubbardston asked for, you know, they, it got discussed about doing um, a district. Model versus a host model like Rutland is that gives the stakeholders more. More leisure, something that they would, you know, talk about, but you know, who knows if it would, where it would go. I mean, it wouldn't be anything that would happen overnight if it did. It would then require a new agreement. So that was just kinda tossed out there.
You have something you wanna add?
Gee, I only brought this up ten years ago with a whole plan on how to do that.
Is that all?
So that way it's not just Rutland, who, who, they're the host, so they're the primary that makes ultimately.
There'd be two operating boards, one administrative board, which would be the select board members. Administrative assistants and then operational level, which would be all the chiefs. And they would run the day-to-day. You're not beholding to the town of Rutland or anything.
Right.
It'd be its own independent thing, pay the bill, you know. It would be a lot smoother on getting things done.
I know that Nate did ask if it would be cheaper and not necessarily, but it will give you more of a voice at the table.
Not only that, it gives you more voice in Boston for the nine-one-one grants because it's a regional district. Little difference with regionalization and regional district. So they could get a lot more money. They could get a building out of this, the equipment. So it's, it's, there's a lot of benefits to it.
Yeah.
You know.
That the Leicester Regional Public Health Coalition, the town of Leicester's the host town. But they don't, they can't make any decisions on hiring employees.
Right.
It's all representative for each town that are on that board.
So that's how it would be, yeah.
So there's, there's precedent for this type of setup. And I think especially with the hiccups, I think it would benefit from some more support.
Deep down inside, I think Rutland would be in favor of that.
It shares their responsibility.
Exactly.
Right now, those are their employees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, right, and that, so that would, obviously it would take a lot of discussion because then they would have to be moving those employees to.
To the district.
Yeah. So, I mean.
It's a good idea if they have the backbone to fall through with it, you know.
And lastly, while I was there, um, the TA from Hubbardston asked. Spoke with myself and the TA for Berry, just in regards to, you know, we're in budget season, the school, the assessments, the money. Stand and unite in front together. And just asked if we would be interested in a, just a discussion meeting. Which I personally, I mean, it's up to the board if I go or not. Um, think it's always good to just see what's, it's said. I mean, clearly, uh, you know, I've said and I continue to say, I just can bring it back to the board and. Um, just inform them of where Hubbardston or Berry or any other town is their perspectives and. But ultimately, board will do what needs to be done for Ocam.
Isn't there a meeting the thirteenth for the budget?
With the school committee?
Or the subcommittee?
I think so, yeah. Um, and I mean, the, the superintendent has opened up a forum. For all of the area towns to have transparent conversations about the budget. We attended it. You and I attended it. Um, Hubbardston attended it and spoke for ninety percent of the time. So, um, I just wonder if this is just another opportunity for them to talk about how much money they're having to pay. But they had growth in their residents and hence their apportionment went up.
Yeah. I mean, I think it was nice. I did meet the TA for Berry who's new. So she was very nice and I think wanted to kinda dip into a little bit of everyone, just kinda soaking it in and get her feet wet. That's all I have to report.
Here with the budget, subcommittee's gonna say.
Yeah, before we go in figuratively guns blazing against it.
Oh, yeah, and for sure.
The subcommittee.
Um, well, I think Walter's.
Walter?
I think so.
Is there our, our other person on one of them?
Is anybody running so far?
No, I asked as of today, no. There's no, nobody pulled papers for that position.
So we're gonna be down to one school rep?
I just hate to lose our second vote. I mean, you know, we're so small and we don't have a say or a lot compared to the bigger towns. So it's really important to fill these roles. So we do have our two votes.
Well, if anybody wants to run for school committee, we have papers available to sign up.
March twenty-ninth is the deadline. Please make sure you get them.
Is it? I thought it was April eighth.
To get them, but to return them.
To return them, yeah.
It's a lot of highly educated people in Ocam that aren't stepping up to the plate.
Exactly.
Yeah. And what, Berry has three people?
Three. Hubbardston has three. The, the bigger towns, right? Murray Tree has one, we have two. And I think Hardwick might have two.
Two.
Berry has how many?
Three.
Three.
And one's the chairman, has been the chairman.
That's right.
I thought they had more than three.
Well, it seems like it when they're the chair.
The board have any new business?
They do not. I already had mine in the.
Board of Health had a update on twenty-one COVID.
Oh, you watched that?
That's when I noticed you didn't do the pledge of allegiance.
It's not on the agenda. So, um, yeah, so the, um, I have it under correspondence, but, um, so. We had, the Board of Health has attempted multiple times to reach out to the trustee of the property. He was sent a certified letter back in. August, September.
Like right before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, signed for it. And then was given thirty days to respond with a plan as to what they were gonna do. And it was really a voluntary take action because the health agent said that. Um, and it was really a voluntary take action because um, the health agent said that um there's very little legally that we can do. Um, i- if they were trash on the outside of the house that we had access to, but we can't go into the house. Um, although they did look through the windows and they didn't see like garbage bags of trash or anything like that. Um, so um, I have tried to reach out, um, and then Lester's tried to reach out and the calls go directly to voicemail. So they're gonna send another certified letter asking them to attend our next Board of Health meeting. Um, so um, you know, the only option after that is to let them know they're gonna be fined for not responding. But there's, that's a whole issue of assessing fines and actually collecting on them, um, that I'm not sure would be worth the hassle, but um.
Do you get to do the collection?
So the the town would, yeah. Um, um, we can assess, was it a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars a day maximum? Um, but um, I also think if we go down that road with one property, then we're gonna have to enforce that throughout the town. Um, then we haven't done that historically, so. Um, and the the, as it stands right now, um, there have not been any complaints. Um, the Board of Health sent out uh, letters to um uh, the abutters that we were advised we should. Um, it kinda telling them, you know, don't have food out, don't have trash out. Um, but um, I don't know what's going on with that probate, but or if the person who was interested in it is still interested in it.
I knew he was, but this is a couple, few months ago, um, from the building inspector.
It's going on two years.
Yeah.
Um, but at least in the winter, the reproduction is slowed down because I don't think they reproduce in the who knows, I don't know the rat population and how they do that, but um, the food is is reduced. Um, but as it gets warmer, um, they'll be back.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
But between, I mean, unless the building commissioner can think of, I mean, the barn, that looks dangerous.
He says it's not.
Okay, it looks it. I mean, the roof is part of it's missing.
I know.
Um.
He said structurally, it's okay.
I'd like to see it repaired then and made up to be one of our only barns left in the.
We're gonna use our part to help pay for it.
That'd be okay.
I wanted, I wanted to buy that till bring it back to like a little.
Post office.
Store, yeah.
There are a lot of people want to get the house.
Uh, C C, are you trying to speak?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, it's Chris Shute at seventeen Maple. Um, so what's the, kind of the end game for twenty one Coldbrook? If there's really nothing you can do from a short term perspective with regards to fines, is it essentially it makes its way through probate and then eventually someone else might purchase it, or would it just eventually default to the town?
That that's the understanding is that this was all gonna be solved a year and a half ago because someone was gonna buy it. Um, was ready to buy it. And um, then they were told probate was holding things up, it was gonna be a couple more weeks. Um, and and it's been a year plus later. Um, but the Board of Health, all we can do is ask them to um, mitigate the rat population. And they are current on their taxes.
That that was the thing we can throw, maybe they weren't.
Okay, thank you.
In conjunction with what you're talking about, we need non criminal citations. Can you send an email to Fred? See where he got his last bunch from? Is there certain people that need him in town?
I thought that he was, I thought police was doing that for the animal inspector. Or the animal officer, excuse me. Last, I remember this getting a call from the animal control officer asking me to order them. And I was, I was like, well, no, I think that goes back to.
Double check.
Your department.
Maybe he did a lot of them, maybe he's got them. If he does, he's gotta issue them to uh, Board of Health, Building Inspector. Planning Board too.
I mean, we have a bylaw that allows for it and master and a law allows for it.
Yeah, we adopted the non criminal disposition. The the other thing with the non criminal disposition is we have to appoint a hearings officer.
Yes, that was the other thing.
So what are your ideas there?
Is it one individual or can it be a committee?
No, it has to be one.
Can it be the zoning? It has to be somebody independent of all that.
Can't be anybody in enforcement.
Yeah, because then if you write even a non citation, they have the right to appeal that.
Yeah.
And then if you don't have a hearing officer, then they would have to go to the court.
District.
District court that you're under.
And I heard a whole lot of complaints.
Process.
At the mass conference about this whole thing.
Yeah.
And clearly.
And they all get um, appealed and won at the district court. Every single one of them.
I mean, they can get appealed from the from the um, citation officer too. And then go there, but just another step.
It depends on how far you wanna take it. I mean, if the clerk magistrate says there's no problem, cause you can appeal that. Not even go in front of a judge for what?
A hundred dollars.
Hundred dollar fine, yeah. And who's prosecuting now? We bringing K and P in two hundred twenty dollars, twenty dollars an hour to do that? Because the D A's not gonna do it, you know?
Yeah.
Nonetheless, we need a hearings officer in town. Tom, what are you doing?
He's unplanning.
Good luck, we gotta. Something to talk to. We have any uh, correspondence?
Yeah, um, so uh, the Board of Health sent um, two correspondents to the Board of Selectmen in the last week. Um, one was today, uh, this morning, um, informing it that um, the Board of Health is doing uh, an Earth Day.
Oh, yes.
Uh, roadside cleanup um, before the ticks and high grass. Um, on April twentieth from ten to two P M. Uh, we'll provide the trash bags, um, gloves, um, and the dumpster. Um, and uh, uh, we're working on a postcard that we mailed to all residents uh, announcing that. Um, and we reached out to highway, police and fire just to let them know we've heard from police and fire. Um, but same thing, the dumpster would be in the same spot it has been for the last few years that we've done the.
One dumpster or two?
Uh, we we only fill like a tenth historically of the um, the trash dumpster.
But then you have the electronic.
Right, yeah, so we're just, this is just gonna be a trash dumpster. But hopefully, because you're not walking through all that tall grass, we'd have more people to take advantage of it. Um, so we'll probably get the same fifteen yard dumpster. Uh, we're gonna ask for it as a donation, but we'll pay for it if um, we have to. Um, and we'll continue to do the June eighth event. Um, but we probably will not do a trash uh, roadside um, cleanup that day. Just because literally, I think three people um, offered uh, trash um, on that day.
Okay.
But we'll still do all the recycling and meds and electronics.
Still nothing with hazardous waste?
Um, North Brookfield did one, um, which nobody from O K M attended. Um, so um, so maybe the next time they do it, the Board of Health would be able to send out a mailer for it.
That would be nice.
Um, they gave us like two weeks notice um, that we were invited to be part of it. Um, if you do it, it's all like by the pound.
Okay.
Um, and um, so we have no, the known cost is unknown. So if if the town of O K M is gonna take the risk of, let's say we have a thousand dollars we're willing to put towards it. We don't know what to charge the resident. Um, so with North Brookfield, we said, we'd love to have O K M residents participate, but we want you to charge them because we can't be on the hook for a bill for a portion of of the total cost, which is what they wanted, and they were fine with that.
Oh.
So, and and North Brookfield does have um, weekly electronics and mattress disposal.
Hmm.
Um, so you don't have to wait for the June event.
Oh.
Yeah, so that has been on the Board of Health website for quite a while now.
Okay.
Um, but we're gonna do a a mailing on the Earth Day roadside cleanup and we're gonna do another mailing on the uh, June um, uh, cleanup. And then the second um, communication that we made to the Board of Selectmen was the resignation of the um uh, Leicester Regional Public Health Coalition, regional coalition director. Um, and so um, uh, I've um going to be on that search committee or the interviews for the replacement. Um, but in the, during the time being of the seven or eight towns, they have one inspector. Um, they were already down two, um, so.
Was it the public, the public health nurse? Didn't he resign?
Uh, so the, one of the inspectors resigned in November. Um, and so then they hadn't filled that position, um, and now the director was doing inspections. And they already had another position open, um, so. Um, but they are looking to hire a social worker um, for the coalition to do uh, work with seniors. Um, and they're looking to hire a substance use disorder person to use the um, opioid funds.
Yeah.
Um, I think we got like three thousand dollars, um, but some towns got forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year for however many years uh, this grant is is in place for. So this uh, Mackenzie Faulkner is our um, is gonna be taking care of O K M, but she's also taking care of all the other towns.
And if I can just bring something up under old business, um, Republic Services, we have the dumpster outside and they come, I think maybe every two to three weeks, but clearly I've been getting letters or notes from the custodian and then from downstairs that the trash is filled. Um, often more than when it's getting picked up. So currently we pay about a hundred and ninety two dollars a month. Which clearly if I increase the or if the board request to increase the scheduled pickups, I'm assuming that that price would go up because it would be more often. So I just wanted to know how you guys would like to proceed, because I'm, if it's not from the custodian, it's from downstairs, the trash is filled, I can't fill anything in there or I know recycle is once a month and we're kinda you know, doing okay with that, but it's the trash, the concern.
And there's food in that trash every day.
There is, yes, so.
So, guys, question? When I pulled in in park, there was somebody in an S U V out here throwing trash in the dumpster.
Um, well.
It's a silver color S U V custodian.
Yeah, because they locked. We have a lock on it and only the town has the key or the custodian or downstairs.
No issue then. I was just like, you're talking about me and pull up like, oh man, I wonder.
Yeah, because Chris. No, we did put a lock on it for that reason.
Yeah.
I thought it was kinda kinda nervy, you know, everybody.
Well, no, they would. When we had just.
That's what it was.
When we had the individual one, the former town clerk, I remember, said, come look, that literally someone pulled up on a Friday when it's busy here. Got out of their car, took out two or three bags of trash and threw it right in the, like, no shame.
And somebody was doing that at the, behind the police station.
And they got a lock as well. We had to put locks on it for that reason.
Yeah.
Um, but I just didn't know because I'm I'm getting this quite often.
I think we should look at other.
We did look back.
I thought they picked up two weeks ago. I thought I saw the truck out there.
But you know, you have to think that that's trash for here, that's library. I don't know, clearly, I mean, I'm hearing it often, so whatever the the their pickup, it's, we need to be like one step, one cycle sooner.
See what you get for prices.
I mean, I know that back when I started here, I had looked into um, dumpster services, which is with a great price, but they were able to match it and it was matched for the longest time, so we kinda just stayed with them. It's creeped up a little bit in price, but not too bad, but now it just seems like it's not pickups need to be a little bit more frequent. So I will find out what it would be if there's a change in price, but I just want to make sure the board was aware.
There are four, uh, currently four licensed um, haulers in O K M. Um, Burdette, Dumpster Services, Waste Management and.
Huback?
Huback.
I remember I called to, I think it was Huback, and they were, they're fairly newer company, right? So they didn't have the big bins quite yet. They said, oh, check with us in like about a year as we grow and 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 develop a little bit. Um, dumpster, they they did back then, but I think when Republic switched where they got rid of all the residential, their their clientele spiked, so they were kinda didn't have a whole lot of availability, yeah.
But we have three local, um, two in Spencer and one in Rutland. Is Huback in Rutland?
Yeah, I'll look around if that's and see what prices are and.
Okay.
Any other correspondence?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
Bava?
Aye.
Aye, seven oh nine.